Today is November 17th, 2025, and the time is 7:00 PM. This meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Webb, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. The Board of Trustees extends a heartfelt gratitude to our entire Prosper ISD community. In Prosper ISD, we unite students, families, teachers, staff, and the larger community in the relentless pursuit of excellence. Together, we champion; we support every student's journey to excellence; together, we cultivate; we create meaningful connections across our growing community; together, we empower; we develop our people to lead and inspire growth; together, we prosper; we unite in shared purpose while honoring individuality. And together, we also cheer on the Mighty Eagle Band that was a top finisher in the state. We cheer on Rock Hill made the playoffs for the second straight year. PHS and Walnut Grove are moving on in the playoffs this week. And hey, if you're not excited about Prosper ISD, you got problems on stuff. So you got good things going on up here. Your collective commitment to Prosper ISD is what makes our district thrive. Thank you for choosing and supporting our schools. Mr. Dial, would you please pray for us this evening?
I will. Join me. Heavenly fathers, we gather tonight. I want to begin by simply saying thank you. Thank you for this season of Thanksgiving, for the blessings you've given our community, and for the privilege of serving students, families, teachers, and staff. Lord, ask for your wisdom, your guidance, in every decision we make. Help us lead with humility, unity, a genuine desire to do what is good and right for those entrusted to our care. Protect our students, strengthen our teachers, and bless every family represented in our district. And Father, in this season of gratitude, remember the greatest gift you have given, the gift of your Son, Jesus. Your word tells us that you love the world so much that you send him not to condemn us but to save us. Through his death and resurrection, you offer forgiveness, hope, and new life to all who trust in him. For this, we are thankful. As we move forward in this meeting, let your love guide us and your truth shape our actions. And may everything we do tonight reflect your grace and bring good to those we serve. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one
Mr. Van Wolf, would you please read the board vision this evening?
Sure thing. Happy to. The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Thank you, sir. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act as outlined in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be conducted in public. However, we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions in real estate, school safety and security, and issues that require legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for public viewing at least three business days before this meeting. That will bring us up to some important dates. And Mrs. Dixon, you had something that you wanted to talk about a date-wise coming up with scooters and...
Yes. So apparently with the town of Prosper, they have a new ordinance that their council has approved, that there will be increased... What am I looking for? Consequences, thank you, for the children riding scooters. They have designated it as a vehicle or motorized, and it will require a license and helmet for children under age 16, and holding the parents accountable if there are damages and injuries involved. So you can go to the town website. Mayor Bristol has explained some of the new ordinances and the consequences for injuries going forward. And we want to make sure that our parents and families and children are aware of that. It is not ISD-related. It is all through the town's ordinance. But we want to make sure that our families are aware, and that we'll go and seek that information for yourselves so that you know what to expect in the next week or so. I believe it goes into effect December 1st.
Yes, that is correct. So thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to dates that are in front of you, and then we have some celebrations this evening.
Yes. So speaking of winning, we have a pretty big winner with us tonight, and that is Coach Kutch. If you'll come up. Family, come on up. This is a family thing. You just think you're gonna have to, because that's what happens here each week. So we're very excited to be able to recognize Coach Kutch tonight. We're being selected by the National Federation of State High School Associations as the 24-25 NFHS State Soccer Coach of the Year. His prestigious honor is awarded to only one coach, and each URL sanctions sport across the state and recognizes Coach Kutch's exceptional leadership, dedication, and the profound impact he has made on the student athletes at Walnut Grove High School. Go Wildcats! Your commitment to excellence sets a shining example for coaches and athletes across Texas. Being named Texas's top coach of boys soccer is a remarkable distinction. Your hard work, mentorship, and positive influence on their athletes and school community truly embody the highest ideals of Texas high school athletics and Prosper ISD. I will say, being able to watch Coach Kutch, it's kind of a little bit of a tongue twister, you know? The beautiful and wonderful thing is that you don't even know he's there, right? You know, the kids are there, and the total focus is on what's happening with those kids. And Coach Kutch, you kind of have to go, oh yeah, there's Coach Kutch, he's coaching them. But silently in the shadows, and that's when you know you've got a super-strong coach who has a great relationship with student athletes, but also with the parents. I do have to tell this story because Mrs. Kutch is here. I'm standing on the sidelines of this state game, and there is what I assume to be one of our parents yelling, yelling, basically coaching from the stands. And I was like, I looked over at Mr. Tode and went like, hey, who's that mom back there? He goes, oh, no, that's Coach Kutch's mom. So not only do we have one state winning coach, but we've got coaches from the stands. There's also the state members that are... So we're very excited. If Coach Smith, Coach Allison, Mr. Tode, if y'all will please come up, we would love to have you join us, too. She helped win it. I mean, I was there, I witnessed it. Yes, it's a win, alright.
Awesome. Okay, we will now hold a quick intermission. Hey, Coach, if you would like to stay and hang out for the rest of the meeting while we talk about some riveting business things, you are more than welcome to. But if not, y'all can sneak out and go have some family time. Next part we have this evening is a public hearing on the 2024-2025 First Rating. We will now hold a public hearing on School First Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, Texas Administrative Code, TAC, Chapter 109, Subchapter AA. And Mrs. Troy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, welcome. Welcome to my new TED Talk. Per TEA, we get to have this hearing every year. So you've heard it before, you'll hear it again. So I'm just gonna quickly breeze through this. We have no concerns from where we stand, but we do need to go over every single indicator that is listed. So I'll try to make it as painless as possible. These are the reporting requirements. We have posted it to a local newspaper here in the district. We are within the two-month timeframe of receiving our final scores and presenting it. And then the report is available on our website in the Business Services area. Okay? And the primary goal of the first report is to achieve quality performance in the management of a school district's financial resources. Okay, and here are our criterias. There's, this is the 24-25 First Rating, but it is based on 23-24 financials. So you just have to keep that in mind, that we are looking back two years technically through all of this information. There's 21 indicators. Four of them are critical. There's seven other indicators that are a ceiling indicator, and then we have some pass/fail ones. These are the grades that are statewide. You can see the majority of the school districts here in the state of Texas do receive an A at 862, and then very few receive a B or below. Okay, so indicator number one, was our audit filed on time with TEA? And yes, it was, so we passed that. Indicator number two, an unmodified opinion means that there's no indications of financial mismanagement, material errors, or poor controls. So we were fine with that one. Number three, did we make all of our required debt payment services on time? And we did. Number four, this is the first of the seven ceiling indicators. And again, a ceiling indicator is it's a specific criteria that you either meet it or if you don't. And if you don't meet it, then you're assigned a letter grade. It's typically a grade of a B or a C. But we did pass indicator number four. Number five is, did the total assets exceed total liabilities for the district as a whole? And it did. Number six, this indicator measures whether our fund balance is declining too quickly. And if it is declining, whether there was sufficient fund balance to operate for at least 75 days. And again, because this is based on the 23-24 financials, we were able to put money back into the fund balance, so we were able to pass this easily. Indicator seven measures how long in days after the end of a fiscal year we could have paid our bills without receiving additional funds. And we scored a 10 out of 10 on that one. Indicator number eight measures whether we had sufficient short-term assets at the end of the fiscal year to pay off our short-term debt, and we did. We received a 10 on that one. Number nine, did we spend more than we earned? And if we did, did we still have enough cash on hand to operate for at least 60 days? And we did. So we received a 10 on that one as well. Indicator number 10, this indicator measures how accurately we forecasted revenue comparing budget and the actual revenue through PMS reporting. And I will say, our PMS department is fabulous. Kim Doyle is our PMS director, and she does a wonderful job. And because of that, we scored a perfect 10 on this one as well. Indicator number 11 is like asking someone if their mortgage exceeds the market value of their home, basically. It also recognizes that high-growth districts incur additional operating costs to open new buildings. And so we were able to pass this one easily as well. Okay, indicator 12. This indicator calculates what percentage of the district's total assessed property value is represented in its outstanding debt obligations. So you've heard Mr. Witt get up and speak about that and our taxable value. This is the only indicator that we did not receive the full 10 points on. We received six. And that's just because we're building and we're borrowing, and we have to have that debt in order to continue to grow with our community. Indicator 13 measures the percentage of budget spent on administration. Ours is less than 8.5%, so we passed this with the full 10 points. Number 14, if the school district's enrollment declined, did the number of staff decline? We passed that one, in case you were wondering. That one was pretty easy to pass. Number 15, how well did we project average daily attendance at the start of the biennium? And we got five out of five on this one. You would think it would be 10, but it's five. And then number 16 is another ceiling indicator, and this indicator measures the quality of the data reported by PMS. And again, they did a great job with that one. Number 17, it's talking about a material weakness. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency or a combination of significant deficiencies, like internal controls, mismanagement of funds, all of those. So we did pass this as well. Number 18, did our auditors find that we complied with the applicable laws, contracts, and requirements from granting agencies? And we did, so 10 out of 10. Number 19, did we comply with legal requirements to post financial transparency information? And we did, so we received five out of five on that one. Number 20, this indicator measures whether the school board had the opportunity to discuss the revenues outlook prior to the budget proposal. And we typically do that in June, July, and August, those board meetings. So we've had plenty of discussion on everything. And then finally, indicator number 21, this indicator determines whether the district received too much state aid and needed to pay it back to TEA or to Austin. And we did not. We were fine on that one because we anticipated accurately. So we passed that ceiling indicator. So in summary, we passed all of our indicators, scored an overall rating of a 96, again with our only deduction being from indicator number 12 because of our debt and our borrowing for bonds. We do have to post some required disclosures here at the end, so they're pretty minimal. These are the reimbursements for board and superintendent for travel and for training for the 23-24 school year. And then we did not meet any of the disclosures that are seen before you on the screen there. And that is it, unless you have any questions.
Congrats on a good audit.
Thank you. Sorry, I blew through that so fast, but it's like watching paint dry sometimes.
That's good. Thank you, Ms. Troy.
Thank you. Okay, board discussion on that. Anything from anyone? No? Okay. We did not have anyone to speak up publicly on that. So we will now close the public hearing on the first rating and return to our regular board meeting. We are now back in the regular board meeting, and that brings us to, there was nobody signed up this evening for public comment, so that takes us to superintendent's report.
Yes. So as you know, we continue on the professional learning community work and empowering our people, but also that empowerment of our students through that process as well. And you've probably heard me say it before, but it's just as important that we invest in the learning of our students as we invest in the learning of our adults. Want to thank the Prosper Education Foundation for their continual support, too, in this endeavor, because they continue to be able to give back, to help support, so that we can pay for the trainings, the things that we're able to bring into the district. And so here are just a few examples of our staff being able to come together, leaders, teachers, really being able to lock arms in the work that's most important, our students' learning and overall experience academically. And then Richland and Thompson dedication, outstanding dedications, being able to honor the life and legacy of Ms. Thompson, but also Richland High School as our fourth high school in Prosper ISD. Certainly want to give a shout-out to all of the staff members involved in this, specifically Mrs. Brantley and her events team, who go behind the scenes to ensure that every detail is taken care of, so that these are just done at a high, high level, that are very elite. And then also, really to our students in preparation, being able to see them perform. And I think at Richland and at Thompson, really all of our school dedications this year, it's a shining moment when we can see our kids do that. Want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Thompson, too. They made a donation to the school that night at the dedication, and certainly, we are very thankful and appreciative of that. And then our elementary and middle school superintendent advisory council, always a great time with our students in the way that they connect with one another, but also the feedback that they're giving. They gave us some really great information on our leader/learner profile, and so we actually have some pretty exciting work that's coming out of that, that will blend the worlds of our adult learners along with our students together in a document. So to be seen soon. But obviously, following in alignment with our strategic priority of "together we champion."
Some sharp-dressed individuals up there.
Hey, no doubt.
And one of those young men, one of those young men gave a perfect moment of silence this morning on announcements at his respective campus.
I would totally agree with you on that. So a lot of holding court there that goes on. And then our district-wide Pink Out Day, certainly want to thank the Tooman Foundation for their partnership as a community outreach. They've done just so much for our community, specifically some of our own staff members in the way in which they have given back. So for us to really lock arms, and it's a really, we've got a special community because it goes well beyond the school walls, and we see it out on the streets of Prosper and restaurants, everyone wearing pink to really rally behind. And obviously, all of the paintings downtown are always a great reminder that so many people have either lost or they are fighting a battle. And certainly, we want to be there to support all of those individuals. And certainly, that early education for our students to understand just breast cancer awareness, research, all the things that come with this for our kids to really change the future. And then Hope Squad, we had Poland come and visit us, and it was an amazing experience. They were very in awe of the drill team uniforms, because we had the drill team at Walnut Grove, and they do not have those extracurriculars in Poland, and so it's just school and only school. And so they were very enamored with them, but even more just amazed and in awe with our students and our staff and our Hope Squad programs. We were able to visit Walnut Grove High School. We went to Hayes Middle School, which we had parents there, who are parents of Hope Squad students, so they got to hear from them, which was a really neat experience, to hear that parent perspective. And then we went to Light Farms Elementary, so we really showed them the broad range of everything that we have offered. I got a chance to visit with them on Tuesday, following their visit, and they were just so impressed with our students, obviously, our buildings and facilities, our staff, which I told them, they can't hire anyone and take them back to Poland. We're keeping them here. And they left. But they really leaned into the culture of the district and how that was just so pervasive with every student that they spoke to. It was really fun with the high school students, because they asked, they were like, so what do you do when the kids, like, when they say things to you? And they were like, what do you mean, say things to us? And they were like, well, like, do they ever say anything that's not nice? And they're like, no, we're the Hope Squad. Like, who would do that? Right? It was kind of cute, the way that the high school students responded to that. But some amazing work. Certainly want to thank Ms. Stockdale, Ms. Wilson, and Ms. Delory, our teachers, who really stood up and were empowered to be able to do all things Prosper and highlight that "together we prosper." And then Lunch with Our Leader, another Prosper Education Foundation-sponsored event. Such a great time to be able to connect with our people. And I think one of the neatest things that comes out of that is that they get to connect as a group. And so you'll have your elementary counselors kind of gathering up, and they want to talk to one another, and the middle school counselors, and the high school, and they all want to just kind of sit and visit. But it's always such a nice time. And it's, as an educator, it's always just nice to know that you have lunch ready for you one day, and you're not going to eat a bag of Cheez-Its that day, so, because you're busy and trying to get through everything. And so it's just a nice time to kind of refresh them and really pour into them and let them know how much they're valued and certainly respected for the work that they do for our students, our staff, and our parents. And then we had our Unstoppable Athletes last week for bocce ball, and that was an excellent event. I love this event. It's one of my favorite events that we do. We have our partners PE there, along with our Unstoppable Athletes and our special education program. And the way that they support each other is really remarkable, and I think a testament to what we do in Prosper ISD. Sent an email to the staff this morning. There was a student, and she was coaching on the side to one of our Unstoppable Athletes, and she said, remember, when you throw the ball, you have to be gentle, just like with your baby sister. And so there's just all these moments of really bright spots that are very heartwarming. But I use that as a reminder for our staff to remember, we have to all be gentle with one another as well, and our kids do it so, so well. Okay, and then student enrollment continues to go up. So we are an add of 2,018 students at this time in the district, with a grand total of 33,710 students. And then we have our bond construction video. So what you would see here, there's some buildings. Oh, there it is. Nope.
Okay, that brings us to number 10, Consent Agenda. Everybody has their packet. May I have a motion on this?
Move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us. None opposed. Motion passes. That brings us to number 11. This one, we are going to, we're going to take back, discuss in executive session, and then move this after that time, if everybody's good with that. So that will be 11A and B. We will have after executive session. That takes us to 11C. Consideration and possible action regarding approval of architects for the district. Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the pool of architects as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion on this one?
Just want to thank, there are several firms in the room right now, so I just want to thank them for making time to come tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you all. And Dr. Ferguson, these are just the list of ones that we can use for future projects.
Yes, so this is a list of a pool that we can utilize for services.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us. None opposed. 11C passes. I think it's to 11D. Consideration and possible action regarding approval of the 26-27 academic calendar. May I have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion. I move that the board approve option A, as the 2026-2027 academic calendar is presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any discussion on this, or anything that you want to say, Dr. Ferguson?
No, just appreciate all of the staff members who weighed in to let us know exactly what they were wanting to have happen. And certainly, the sooner we can get this out, the better, because that helps our families with planning for the future.
Absolutely. Okay. Anything else? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us. None opposed. So 11D passes. Takes us to 11E. Consideration and possible action regarding 2026-2027 middle school attendance boundaries.
Mr. McLaughlin has a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm bringing forward tonight two proposals, one informational item and one proposal for your consideration and possible action. First, want to acknowledge that this is a very difficult process for many of our students, our staff, the families of Prosper ISD. Regardless of where you draw a boundary line on a map, and regardless of what decision you do or don't make, you're always going to miss the mark with what some families were hoping for. I wish it wasn't that way. I know we all wish it wasn't that way. It's unfortunate. I wish it wasn't that way. I know we all wish it wasn't that way. It's unfortunate byproduct of what is a difficult process. But I believe we're bringing forward a recommendation that best positions Prosper ISD for the future in regards to both finances and in terms of our growth. So I want to talk a little bit about our zoning process and developing the recommendation. As I shared in October, we are looking at both economic and housing trends in around the nation, but more specifically in DFW and in Prosper ISD, and we're looking at how those indicators are impacting our demographics and, most importantly, our student enrollment. And then we're taking all of that information and to develop a recommendation that we brought forward, a proposal in October. And then we seek both your feedback, but then feedback from our community. We're very fortunate to work, and many of us live in Prosper ISD, where our community is highly engaged in our schools. They have, they care about their, the school district, but also specifically their kids' experience. We received a lot of feedback and, from our online submission, but also in our in-person meeting. We got a lot of great feedback, and I want everyone to know that we went through every line of feedback that was submitted online. We listened to everyone that came in person, and then we reviewed our notes from that evening. And although we necessarily can't take every recommendation that came and that was submitted, I do want everyone to know that we did, we did listen, we did hear. Sometimes the feedback we got would contradict. One family would want one thing that was the exact opposite of the other. That is the, unfortunately, the difficult part of the process, but I do appreciate how engaged our community is, and I appreciate the feedback that they have given us throughout this process. So I'm going to share first, this is something we shared in October. This is nothing new, but when we open schools, we typically give the rising last grade in a school the option to stay at the school that they've been at, and so we're going to continue that for our rising eighth graders. They can either choose to remain at the school that they've been at with parent-provided transportation, or they can make the choice to attend their new zone middle school, which in this case would be Bridges. So our first recommendation is that we would delay the opening of Watkins Middle School. So I want to talk a little bit about how we, how we got here. We began to receive information that the, we, the housing market in the DFW area had begun to slow down, and every subsequent quarter reinforced the same data points that the housing market, home building, home closings had slowed down throughout the area, and we definitely have seen that in Prosper ISD. But I want to make it clear, we are still growing, as Dr. Ferguson just shared. We are still growing, but we are not growing at the extreme rates that we've seen the last three years. So growth has slowed here, but still going. Housing starts are down 35.8% in our area, and closes are down 31.5%. So it's not a one-to-one correlation, but the housing starts and the housing closings are a big driver of our overall student enrollment, so we want to be responsive to that. And additionally, we've been watching closely what's been going on in nearly every district around us, good school districts and good communities that are having to make really difficult decisions and close schools. We've been watching, watching that. And so, you know, while we may remain a fast-growing district, we feel like we are best positioned in the future in terms of growth and finances to slow down at this time. So I also want to talk about the financial benefit of not opening Watkins. We don't ever, ever make any decision at a school district just based on dollars and cents, though. That is a driver. We are charged to be, you know, fiscally responsible with our taxpayer money, but we never make that decision just based on finances alone. We're always weighing the cost and the, you know, the impact on financial savings, on our students, our staff experience, and certainly how that impacts our families. The move to delay Watkins would give us a financial benefit without impacting students' access to high levels of learning. It will not increase class sizes. It will not cut programs, and it will not impact staffing positions. So that's very rare opportunity in the life of a school district to be able to save money, like significant amount of money, without doing one of those four things. Usually that's where school districts go first, is they increase class sizes, they cut student programs, or they cut staff positions. And so this would be a financial benefit to the district without any of those hardships. So I want to, we had a lot of questions from our parents, specifically about the impact of a school size, the total enrollment at a school, and our middle schools have run large the last few years, and what is the impact on school size on these three items right here, which is class sizes, the number of elective or the class offerings that are available to kids, and the overall teacher workload. And while I think there is some confusion that one correlates with the other, there isn't a correlation between an overall school size and class size. The class size is actually a factor of how building is staffed with teachers, and Sharice and the human resources team do a great job of tracking enrollment on a weekly basis, and they're constantly looking at the number of teachers in each building, and they use that data to develop staffing models at each level, elementary, middle, and high school, to ensure that there is equitable class sizes across the district. Right now, we have middle schools that are at very different places in terms of total school enrollment, but if you go and look at the average class size at each one of those schools, they are within a one-student average. So that's kudos to Sharice and her team for doing a great job of making sure that there's equity in class sizes, because that impacts the students, but it also impacts the teachers' experience in the building. So neither of those class sizes or teacher workload is connected to overall school size. And then on the elective offerings, I would just say generally, both in my experience and what I've seen, you actually have more offerings the bigger a school is, and you, the danger is when schools get too small. There's not enough students to choose an elective, or you don't, you can't afford to have a staff that specializes in, and that's one of the great things about Prosper, the number of CTE offerings, the number of fine art offerings, athletics. Our kids have a ton of choices, and part of that is because we are staffed. We have schools that are at a size that we can offer all of those, and that would continue. And then one thing I just want to say in regards to concerns about overall school size is that part of our annual process, not just this year, is that we, the PMS department, also amazing, is constantly providing us data every week on enrollment in each grade level at every school across the district. And we look at that data, and we're tracking it, and then within that, there's always a group of schools that are experiencing fast growth, because it's the new neighborhood that's in feeding that school. And so we ask the PMS department to track specifically those schools, and we're closely monitoring to determine whether or not we need to cap enrollment at that school or close it, which we have done in the past. And our plan would be also to do that moving forward, that Mosley, we would watch Mosley and that we would cap enrollment. We're looking, you know, at around 1,600, that we would not let Mosley grow bigger than that, but we're always within that 1,600. We're trying to make sure that we have room in the classes and rooms and throughout the building, and so that we would continue to do that, so that we would not let Mosley go beyond that. Additional financial benefits, we would, the district would save money in deferring staff costs a year. There is, you know, additional costs anytime you are replicating positions from one school to two schools. And then also, we would, we are anticipating that we'd have cost savings in housing staff members at Watkins for next year. That would save us on reducing rental space needed for staff. And then also, though it wasn't our plan when we initially had Watkins built, to not open it, we do benefit from lower material and construction costs, because that happened. So our recommendation is this for Watkins, that students attending Reynolds and Mosley middle schools would remain at their schools for 26-27 school years, and Watkins Middle School would open for the 27-28 school year. So we've already shared that students who previously attended, selected to attend Reynolds could continue to attend Reynolds, and that if they had rising siblings, those siblings could also choose to attend Reynolds for the 26-27 school year. Again, families would need to provide their own transportation. And then this would be a new recommendation based upon feedback that we received from our families, that we would allow families in the Star Trail, Creeks of Legacy, and Legacy Gardens to choose to attend Rushing Middle School for the 26-27 school year. We would, we would look at that, that choice, you know, limited number of students, same conversation about not allowing Mosley to get too big. We couldn't allow the same to go on at Rushing. So we would open that for a limited number of students, depending upon grade level and staffing considerations, and we will send that information out this week. And then same caveat, that families would need to provide their own transportation. Okay, our second recommendation, which for you to consider and then take action, is our proposed boundaries for Bridges Middle School, which is going to relieve Rogers and Jones Middle School. So this is our current map. This is a big, this is the current boundaries of our middle schools. And then this is a big-picture look at our recommendation, adding Rogers, Rogers being in the northeast part of the district in the brown. Our recommendation is that all of Folsom and all of Cockrell will feed Rogers Middle School, and that all of Johnson Elementary and part of Liliana and part of Reeves will feed Bridges Middle School. And I'll get into a little more detail. This gives you a closer look at it. Folsom and Cockrell surround Rogers right now, and so they would, they would stay there in that blue, and then Bridges would, again, be to the east. So let me talk a little bit about Liliana. Again, one of our goals in drawing the boundaries was that we would not impact a student's high school feeder pattern, and this proposal does not do that for Liliana students. We currently, Liliana is, is a split campus, with some students attending Reynolds and Prosper High School after Liliana, and others being zoned to Rogers, but will be Bridges and Walnut Grove. And so we're going to use Coit Road as our dividing line for Liliana. So students who live west of Coit will remain attending Reynolds and Prosper High School, and students who live east of Coit would now be zoned to attend Bridges Middle School and then Walnut Grove High School. So same with Reeves. Reeves would be split, so the dividing line would be to the south of Frontier, that, which turns into Lot Halle Parkway, but north of 380, east of Custer, and west of Ridge Road, those students would be, attend, would be zoned to attend Bridges Middle School and Walnut Grove High School. Like I said, with Liliana, same circumstances here, is that we would not change the student's high school feeder pattern between Rock Hill or Walnut Grove. That would stay the same. But what this move does is better aligns a student's experience. Many of the students that attend Reeves, they attend Reeves, and then they go to Jones, which is a Rock Hill feeder pattern, and then would attend Walnut Grove High School. So this proposal would better align those students' experience with going to the zoned feeder middle school and then into Walnut Grove. So students who live east of Ridge Road, they would remain zoned to attend Jones Middle School and Rock Hill High School. This is not a change, change for those families. And students who live west of Ridge Road are now zoned to attend Bridges Middle School and Walnut Grove High School. So, any questions before you take consideration?
I had a question, but you answered. I just wanted to say thank you for clarifying. A lot of the questions we got was what impact not opening Watkins would have on Rushing and Mosley.
Sure.
So you've addressed that those caps will be put in place so that neither school gets too overflowed. So thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, I want to say thank you as well. As Mr. Linker said, we received a lot of feedback from parents, and then also at the meeting, and concerns about class sizes and teacher workload. So thank you for clarifying that. And then also, we hear that it's a financial benefit to the district, but it's, it's nice to, to hear and to understand that that directly benefits our students and staff, so that we're not having to cut class offerings as well. So thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I loved when you brought up that, you know, a larger campus actually opens up more opportunities for students, because you're able to staff to that. And if you have a campus with a really low enrollment, it's hard to have some of those programs and make it equitable across the district, so.
And you could see that within Prosper ISD. I mean, within probably 10 years, Prosper did not have an orchestra program. And so, and now it's a flourishing program on all of our campuses, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin? We'll go ahead and we'll get a motion, and then if we need to have any other discussion, we can. So thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, so on 11E, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the 26-27 middle school attendance boundaries as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any further discussion on this? Had a report, had a few questions, comments made now. Anybody have anything else to say before we vote? Okay, hearing none. All in favor. That is all seven of us, none opposed, so 11E passes. That now brings us to number 12. We will now recess into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 071, 072, 074, and 076. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. The time is 10:13, and we are back from executive session, and we do not have any action to take on items discussed in closed session, so at 10:14, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving. There is no action to take on 11A and 11B. We're all good? Okay, good. Now, at 10:14, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
And still have the happy Thanksgiving.